Before we get into the business on the agenda, we have some well-deserved recognition that we'd like to begin with tonight. The first is...
Mark Zappa.
Is the...
Right on time.
The members of the building committee, and I would like them to, I believe of all three, ask you to come up here. You've got a photo box.
Yeah.
And then... I would ask all of the members of the building management committee, Stephanie. I think if we look around, I know that I am very appreciative of the fact that the efforts that these people have done over the last seven months, it's hurting the site, not this whole project, but they really did a lot of damage there. So what we have for introductions is a plaque from the village that says, "The Board of Trustees of the Village of North Hudson does hereby extend sincere appreciation and gratitude to each of the respective individuals for his or her dedication and service as a member of the building management committee associated with remodeling and construction of the village hall, which was completed in February 2008." That was intended to create a record, but it seems to be some question as to when the village had ever really built one. So this, and we know that it was, now at least we have another document that indicates it was actually remodeling at some point. The certificate of appreciation is hereby awarded this third day of June 2008, and it's signed by all the members of the board. So... Mark? Thank you. Corey? Lee? Thank you. Thank you very much. Lauren, thank you very much. Laura, thank you. One of the things we sometimes forget is in all municipalities, it takes more volunteers to make the whole thing go than it does actually people who work for the village. A couple of months ago, when we were doing our staffing analysis, we counted the number of volunteers it takes to make the village run. A hundred and ten people who have volunteered on various boards, committees, service representatives. Jim was one of the representative boards. And without those people volunteering their time, the youth people have also done various board activities and took this on as a separate project. We're especially thankful to the whole youthful community. (applause) Moving right along. Review and approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting of May sixth. Chair would entertain a motion to approve minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the board meeting in May sixth, 2008.
I'll second.
Any comments or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Comments from the floor? The opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics or issues which are not on the agenda.
Do you have a copy of the agenda?
Yes.
Are they gone? Are there any left of this?
No.
My name is Pat Coffey. I live at 560 Summers Landing Road North. I have a brief little letter here that I want to read, and it does not contain things that are on the agenda today. If you allow me to finish it, you'll see that. Over a year ago, a developer for a business on Lot 105 in Summers Landing requested to find out about an access from 35 to this lot for the purpose of rezoning it to C3. The response was to deal with that later. We firmly believe that if the Wisconsin DOT decision has been made available to the planning commission and the village board prior to the rezoning, as it should have been, we would not be here right now. We also know that you, the village board, has the opportunity, the right, and the responsibility to our neighborhood because of the DOT decision to return Lot 105 to a C2 business property and in the future to find a more fitting business to be placed there. We are only one small part of North Hudson, but a part of it nonetheless. It is your responsibility to protect our neighborhood. We've not had any one of you approach us at any time and actually speak to us about any of this. Now is the time to live up to your elected responsibilities before it becomes an expense that the village can't afford. Thank you.
Were there any other comments on items that are not on the agenda?
Is that on the agenda?
I'll treat it as a separate item.
The... Are you going to talk about the traffic studies?
Yes. In fact, it's the next item.
I keep having it then.
This is... Board meetings are not per se open meetings, although we do on occasion entertain questions and answers. So if there are no other items, no one else, then we'll move on. The next item is the Highway 35 Station Lane Traffic Impact Analysis Study. Kevin, I know copies of that have been distributed to the board. Do you want to give us a summary of what the process was and what the analysis recommendations were?
Well, what I did is I chatted with Alama from our particular offices, the individual that generated the traffic impact analysis, and I guess I'll just turn it over to him since he has a lot of experience with this particular project, and he can just go over some of the highlights and some of the numbers. It's part of the new business, the new grocery store that we anticipate for traffic, along with what the improvements, the recommendations are for Highway 35. So I guess I'll just turn it over to him, and he can go through the review.
Yes, if you would go up to the podium, there's a microphone up there. If you could just reintroduce yourself.
Chad Alama, Cedar Corporation. Worked in assistance with DOT on the traffic study. What would the board like to have answered or addressed?
First, is the traffic impact analysis done? Is that an activity that was done exclusively by Cedar Corp. in the writer's summary, or is it something which you do in collaboration with the DOT, and so it is a joint recommendation? I just want to make sure that that's clear.
I mean, it was done in collaboration with WISTOT and their traffic department, so they have certain guidelines they have to see, and so certain interim steps were done and milestones. It was coordinated fully throughout the whole report process, yes.
So the DOT is obviously aware of the analysis?
Yes.
And they are in agreement with the recommendations, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the board is free to accept or not accept the recommendations?
Excuse me?
The board is free to accept or not accept the recommendations?
Um...
And to the extent that we elected not to accept one or more of the recommendations?
I would say that's fair to say in some of these, there are some aspects of these recommendations, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm raising the question because obviously you make five recommendations.
Yes.
Okay. So to the extent that the board would say, okay, we buy one, two, but not three, and four and five are okay? Just picking them out arbitrarily.
Um...
Would that then require us or you to go back to the DOT?
Um, yes. You could either go through Kevin or me, and we could be the DOT liaison, if you will, and coordinate again with, I've been dealing with Greg Helgason over there, and certainly discuss further any concerns you may have about each individual recommendation.
And the only reason I'm creating the example is I'm just trying to make sure it's understood, you know, from a board perspective. If we elect not to go along with the recommendations, then we have to go back to the DOT.
Yes, and there might be some circumstances that this report doesn't cover that you or some of your board members may think of, and then I could, or Kevin could, then take it back to WISTOT, or something happens to the development, or however, yeah.
And just for the purposes of the board as well as for everyone else that's here.
Okay.
Could you just summarize how the study was done? You don't have to get into all the gory details, but, you know, how the study was done, what the conclusions were, short-term, long-term. Because basically, the analysis, as I understand it, one looks at the year 2008, the other one then is based on assumptions, and then it also looks at 2018 based on another set of assumptions, and then based on that comes to a set of conclusions.
Yeah, that's, from a timeline perspective, that's it in a nutshell. You look at existing conditions before the store, traffic conditions, how they are now, how traffic increases with development grocery store on Station Lane for 2008, projected into 2018, how traffic on the main line grows, main line being 35, and also traffic on the opposite Cratley Lane, Cratley Lane, how that grows in 10 years. Again, with assumptions that some residential developments will be completed by then on that side, and I don't think there are any other developments that are available on Station Lane.
Or anywhere.
So, right. So, traffic was projected, as I said, for the grocery store. We looked at minimum thresholds for upgrading geometrics, and as that pertains to the recommendations, minimum track, traffic volumes, partly with our assumptions, the recommended geometric upgrades were a northbound left turn lane into Station Lane, along with a southbound right turn lane into Station Lane, along with widening Station Lane itself, to have an isolated right turn lane out of and a through left turn lane out of Station Lane, if that was at all understandable. Also, some of the things looked at were possible pedestrian increase usage of a store in residential area, so sidewalk-type system with perhaps some accommodations for safety, pedestrian safety, looked at crossing 35. Covered the turn lanes, the right turn lanes, and underground signal, accommodations for signal, which basically would, with the geometric upgrades that are proposed, it would make sense to put the conduits and pole boxes in place. If traffic conditions warranted sooner, then signals could go in sooner, but at least we are prepared for that, or the village is prepared for that at that time. So if we're going to do upgrades, it makes sense to put that in at that time.
Are there any expected changes in the way signals operate going forward? If you look out, because this talks about potentially 10 years out.
Um, other than the big growing fad of roundabouts in the area, the signals themselves, I figured that might be the case.
It's not an agenda item, all you've got.
No, signals haven't changed. Poles and heads, things like that, that are interchangeable, but no, the underground hasn't changed in the last 15, 20, 25 years that I've been associated with them. So how they're lighted, the LEDs they use in the signal heads themselves, yeah, things like that do change, but can also change within the system we would start or initiate with.
I read the analysis twice, and I came to two conclusions about it. It basically said, if you put a grocery store in there today, and everything else stays the same, do you need traffic lights, and what should the street configuration be? It says, no, you probably don't need, you don't need a street light today. Now, you tell me if I'm wrong.
You're correct.
You probably should have, though, just to maintain appropriate traffic flow, you know. We need a right lane going north, as if you're going to Holton Passing Lane. That's already there, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. If you're coming down from Holton in this direction, you should have a right turn lane going into Station Lane, potentially going into the grocery store.
Yes.
And as you exit the grocery store, you should put in a right turn lane exiting it, so people can keep traffic going on that, in anticipation that now, when you go fast forward to 2018, and it assumes that Derek's current addition gets filled out, and...
Derek on Cratley?
Yes.
Okay.
And Phase Two of Derek gets developed within 10 years, and Zappa will develop within 10 years, which I don't know if you've ever thought about that. When you look ahead 10 years at traffic patterns, as I understand it, the traffic pattern that's going to change is just the sheer number of people who will be living there, totally independent of the store.
Yes.
Plus the potential for additional expansion in the township, traffic coming this way for whatever reason.
Yes.
All of which are rather large assumptions, are they not?
They are. That's why one of the things that was mentioned in the report is to reevaluate as developments occur. I mean, if an unforeseen 200-unit development comes in that's going to affect strictly Cratley Lane, then, you know, we may have to accelerate things or reanalyze things. I don't know what 10 years down the line is going to hold. DOT doesn't either, but we just made some reasonable assumptions based on the developments Kevin had told me about, and nothing more.
My reaction to the study, what it really didn't tell me anything we didn't know before the study. It confirmed it, which is, will there be additional traffic if you were to put a grocery store there? Well, of course there would.
Right.
10 years down the road, how much more traffic will there be, depending on what happens in the residential development in the remaining undeveloped areas?
10 years down the road, it's easier to project traffic growth on the main line, State Trunk Highway 35. Not as easy to project side road unless you obviously know the definite number of businesses build out coming in, or if it's commercial, if you know the type of store, it's easier to project the number of vehicles coming in. But no, you're right, there are assumptions made, and that's where we have to go on.
I've got a couple of questions, and I looked at this report, too. Unfortunately, at Public Works, we didn't have a quorum at our last meeting, so we didn't get a chance to review this. And so I have not talked to you or Kevin about it, but I was looking over your, I don't know what you would call it, if it's one of your appendices, it's after the green pages and that sort of thing, where you've got 2008 existing traffic. I just want to go over just some of the numbers, kind of a numbers guy, and I think it would be beneficial for both the board, to me for sure, as well as the rest of the people here, to hear what numbers you came up with for what we have now and what we think we'll have in 2018, and what the impact of the grocery store will be along with the developments that may occur out there. The first question I have, and this one, it's a 2008 existing traffic profile. You show State Trunk Highway 35 coming south. There's a number of 326 cars. Is that, is that vehicles per hour, or what is that?
That's one hourly, a peak hour volume, yeah.
Peak hour volume, and what time of the day is that?
Um, this peak hour was generated through a projection, and it's typically a four to six in the afternoon timeframe.
Okay.
This doesn't reflect a specific counted time. This is...
Just peak, projected peaks?
Projected peak daily, yes.
And where did you get those numbers from?
The side roads I actually counted, and the through volumes are through a projected formal WISTOT count.
They have.
Traffic count, yes.
They have, okay. Then a little while later, on 2018, there's an existing traffic, no developments from Cratley or no supermarket build. It says 2018. It looks like just for State Hunk Triway, Trunk Highway 35, coming south, just for people that don't have that information in front of them, it was about roughly 326 that would come to that intersection and continue south. About 400 would be going north and continue going north. The changes to that, coming south on 2008, another 10 years, it looks like it adds about 160 cars at the peak time, so you're now 488 coming south, and you're roughly 634 going north. So it's another, you know, it looks like it's, I don't know if that's 50% more growth or what. And then because we have no developments along Station Lane or Cratley, those numbers are staying the same at those intersections. I'm just...
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so now I'm looking for a similar sheet to say what would happen when you put the development, and if you could walk us through that somehow, because the rest of this information, it's a little confusing for me to look at.
From the report you're looking at, and I have some of the time charts got mixed around a little bit, so they're not in proper sequence, but 2008, if you look ahead from the sheets you were on just now...
Yep, I'm looking ahead, which one can I look at?
The appendix is, appendix four, first sheet in HCA results.
Appendix four?
Appendix four.
See where I'm at. Okay, I've got that.
Okay, those are the undisturbed 2008 counts.
Yep, I got those.
Okay, so if you go back to the sheets you were just on in...
It's about three or four pages back.
Right, in appendix, middle of appendix two.
The base.
You see the numbers increase due to the Hanson development.
Now, what I'm kind of looking for is a similar page, no, this is without the super, this is without the developments.
The sheet number six in appendix two is with the grocery store development.
Okay, which three? It says here, no supermarket build, developments from Cratley and no supermarket build.
On page six?
Yeah. That's what mine says.
It should say with supermarket operational.
Appendix two. Towards the front.
That's what I said, some of these sheets got a little mixed up when they were put together, so...
Okay. Sorry to take the time, but I just would like to get these numbers. Okay, here's appendix two. All right. Where are we now? The supermarket build, 2008. Okay, so what is it? And now I'm struggling a little bit. The numbers, the numbers coming south on Highway 35 or less?
That's because of bypass traffic.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you, thank you.
The overall number at the intersection is higher, but some of them are going into the store from the main line.
Okay, I'm with you. So we've got, just at Station Lane, which is the main concern that I have, of what goes on at that particular...
So it's another, you know, it looks like it's, I don't know if that's fifty percent more growth or what. And then, uh, because we have no developments along station lane or Kratley, those numbers are staying the same at those intersections. I'm just.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so now I'm looking for a similar sheet to say what would happen when you put the development. And, and if you could walk us through that somehow, because the rest of this information, it's a little confusing for me to look at.
From the report you're looking at, and I have some of the, the time charts got, um, mixed around a little bit. So they're not in, um, proper sequence, but two thousand and eight, if you look ahead from the sheets you were on.
Yeah, I'm looking ahead, which one can I look at?
The appendix is.
Is it?
Appendix four, first sheet in HCA results.
Appendix four?
Appendix four.
See where I'm at. Okay, I've got that.
Okay, those are the undisturbed two thousand and eight counts.
Yep, I got those.
Okay, so if you go back to the sheets you were just on in.
It's about three or four pages back.
Right, in appendix, middle of appendix two.
Base.
You see the numbers increase.
Yep.
Due to the, the Hanson development.
Now, what I'm kind of looking for is a similar page, no, this is without the super, this is without the developments.
The sheet number six in appendix two is with the grocery store development.
Okay, which three? Says here, no supermarket build. Developments from Kratley and no supermarket build.
On page six?
Yeah. That's what mine says.
It should say with supermarket operational.
Towards the front.
That's why I said some of these sheets got a little, uh, mixed up when they put them together, so.
Sorry to take the time, but I just would like to get these numbers. Okay, here's appendix two. All right. Where are we now? The supermarket bill, two thousand and eight. Okay, so what is it? Now I'm struggling a little bit. The numbers, the numbers coming south on Highway thirty-five or less.
That's because of bypass traffic.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
The overall number at the intersection is higher, but some of them are going into the store from the main line.
So we've got, um, just at station lane, which is the main concern that I have of what goes on at that particular juncture. We've got, uh, let's see, fifty, hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-five, or hundred and twenty-six. Cars that come up to that intersection, some go north, some go straight, a few go across. And that's up from twenty-six.
Yes.
And that's with that development. Now, do we have it with the other developments included there?
For this year, no, that is, uh, looking at, assuming the store is built this year.
Okay, do we have it at two thousand and eighteen for everything?
Yes, the page seven.
All right, thank you.
The next page will show. The growth on both station, as you can see, those numbers are the same on station.
That stays pretty, that stays the same. And then there's growth coming, there's growth from the north coming south of that, another fi- you know, roughly fifty percent more, which we had before. And maybe fifty percent more coming from the south and coming from the east along Kratley. There's, looks like it goes to eighty, almost eighty-nine, goes to eighty-nine from about fifty-two. So it's about third more. And that's at peak hours of.
Yes.
Four to six in the evening. Okay. Sorry to take so much time, but I think it's worthwhile just kind of getting a picture of what's happening at that intersection.
Do any other members of board have questions for Kevin or anyone else from Cedar Corporation?
I just have one real brief question. Uh, what is your definition of accommodations for public lockways for public safety?
I guess a designated, uh, crossing on thirty-five, uh, with, um, proper signage. And, you know, there are flashing beacons possibly for isolated, or, uh, individual, um, pedestrian crossings.
Basically a, a warning, let people know that there's.
And I think that might be something that should be looked into with, uh, transition and higher speeds in that area, so.
Is there a discussion with the DOT regarding dropping the speed limit?
I haven't had any with the DOT with that, no.
They issued an approval?
No, they haven't, so it. Just north of there, it's, it's turns to, it's thirty-five through there, but it goes to forty-five or to fifty-five.
How do you, how does a municipality request change of a speed limit on a state highway? Just make the request?
I know in rural roads where a town or a county road is fifty-five, they can, I believe they can drop it themselves within their own, uh. Jurisdiction by ten mile an hour. Once it goes beyond that, I, I think they have to go through the, the DOT. Which department? I could find out, but I don't know offhand. Through Greg, yeah.
I just had one quick question. What is a type B modified intersection?
Standard type B on DOT, um, standard details has a, uh, hundred. Or a two hundred foot right turn lane in, a standard taper going out. And a standard width of the intersection, that standard width being station lane would be thirty feet. When they call up for modified, that means there's going to be two lanes going out, a right turn lane coming out, the left through lane, and then the one lane coming in. So that's why they put modified on there.
If I look at the one, uh, recommend, there's basically only five recommendations. Add a right turn lane, station lane as you're coming out. Add a right turn lane as you're coming down from, you know, from Holden. Improve the south approach on Highway thirty-five, which means if you're coming from this area in the eastern town, presumably you want to turn left. Says with geometrics conforming. What do they mean? Is that, is that really just painting? Cause you've already got two lanes there.
Basically it means installing the left turn lane to the proper lengths according to their manual.
I mean, does, are we talking road construction?
Yes, in a nutshell, yes. I, it, you're gonna have to.
What would you change? What would you change?
Um, we'd have to shift traffic over to the, well, whichever direction we had the room. But we'd have to shift our through lanes in order to build a left turn lane in, uh, at the intersection, a left turn lane going into station lane. So in order to do that, we'd have to, you know, overall widen the intersection, cause we're short one lane. We have a right lane into Kratley, two through lanes, and essentially that's it on thirty-five.
Well, how wide is the right away at that point?
Uh, it's quite wide, but.
It's like a hundred and twenty feet. But there already is, I mean, there already is an expectation that as you're going up and you have to take a left. There already is a lane that allows people to drive around.
DOT, when, um, traffic reaches the one hundred vehicles per hour, um, per manual. And, um, United States Ashdod Green Book reached, like I said, reaches a hundred vehicles per hour. They look at putting in an exclusive left turn lane for those situations. Again, they were based on a few assumptions of, of traffic for the store, but.
So it does look a little bit different than what's currently there?
Uh, what, uh, these, um, bullets are proposing?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Talking about exclusive, I'm, I'm talking primarily the, the left turn lanes you're coming up thirty-five, you want to take a left on station lane.
It would be an isolated left turn lane with a left only.
And then it'd be a through?
There would be a through.
And the right hand turn lane into Kratley.
With respect to the next item, install the underground electrical conduit and pull boxes. I mean, ultimately the developer's going to pay for that, but, you know, under, under any conditions. Would the DOT have any problem with, you know, just delaying that until such time as is necessary, as long as the developer agrees to pay for it?
I can't speak for them, but, uh, you know, I, I don't see why they wouldn't.
Material or substantive change in what they're asking for.
Right, and we'd have to directional bore the, the conduits in regardless, so I don't, you know, it's probably a, a good possibility.
And where was the sidewalk and trail system that was envisioned?
Uh, there'd have to be a little more thought put into it, I guess, on which side it, uh, would go on if you wanted to cross, uh, Highway thirty-five on the north side. And then cross them again on station. I don't know what would work best, or cross them on Kratley on the south side, then cross thirty-five. I mean, some of that Kevin would have to look into with, with, uh, the board.
With respect to that particular crosswalk, particularly for somebody who's walking down Kratley and wants to walk towards the grocery store. And even independent of the grocery store. A number of municipalities I've noticed on Highway thirty-five, if you're going north, are currently using those same kinds of signs that Hudson has downtown. It says pedestrian right of way. They seem to be, you know, reasonably effective, reminding drivers, residents, or pedestrians do have the right of way. Am I correct in assuming that in order to stick one of those up there, we still have to get DOT approval for that? Or anywhere else we might want to put on, on thirty-five?
They have to be designated crosswalks, but being as though, um, WISDOT has agreed with this, I don't anticipate that being a problem.
Mark, do you know, have you dealt with that issue before?
We talked to Greg Hubison actually about that several years ago, and he said because of state control, that we, they would not be allowed to put a building up. Because the city of Hudson owns that, that portion of State Highway thirty-five, that's why they were allowed.
But I noticed him.
I don't know if there would be any change in his mind, but I know he was pretty adamant that he did not believe that those would be allowed.
Do you have any idea how some other municipalities are doing it? They can't all.
Because they own, I mean, Richmond owns, uh, their portion of the, of the highway up there, the city of Hudson owns, or at least operates.
Yeah, I know Hudson owns theirs. I wasn't aware Richmond owned it. All right, well, we're not going to get into the street buying business, that's for sure.
They won't sell it to us anyway.
No, thankfully. Okay. Any other questions for the? For the, uh. Representative from Cedar. Yes?
I just, I have a question, what did, did, did they use as a database for the mono-traffic at the grocery store?
Standard, uh, transportation manuals that, um, gather data from different, um, sites, sources throughout, uh, the country. They plot them on charts and they're interpreted off of these charts, so.
Based on averages of a grocery store, or based on the population and the grocery store, or based on?
Grocery stores, convenience stores, they have different, uh, uh, data sources for, um, all sorts of sites. Ranging from multiple retail, commercial, industrial, residential, everything, so.
So you work off tables and charts?
Yes.
On a daily basis, can you tell me how much, uh, additional traffic you're anticipating for the supermarket? How many cars per day?
The, the amount of cars per day that the, that will actually go in the supermarket driveway was, um. Pushing limits of, right around two thousand cars per day. Now, that's not two thousand new cars. That's a combination of existing cars that will now drive through and into the site. Along with, um, new cars and along with some internal cars trips. From the residential areas in, on both Kratley and station lane.
So how many did, how many new cars does a supermarket add? You have a base that are going in there now, we have a supermarket, how many new cars are coming in?
Again, uh, cars that are coming into the supermarket site is right around two thousand that are coming into the driveway. Uh, new cars, I, I'm guessing sixty, sixty-five percent of that, so fifteen hundred, fourteen, fifteen hundred. New cars.
Yeah.
Per day.
Most, you know, the, the data that he's got is peak hour, peak vehicles per hour, and now you're asking a, a different number. And so it might be kind of hard to pick those out, I don't know.
That's a good point, because a lot of the, um, the basis for these studies is not done on, on cars per day. It's, it's the one peak hour that we look at, and that's where most of the.
Your safety concerns are.
Right, and that's where the interpretations and the, your, um, recommendations are made from.
But it's a valid point. How many cars are going down the road before and how many after? Well, yeah. Like he said, when you design it.
Grocery store is going to survive, it needs so much traffic.
Yep.
Generate to survive, and is that capable of happening with the way the traffic takes now?
Dean, I think you gave us a number one time.
I, I've done a tremendous amount of stuff. And, uh, I'll, I'll be very frank with this total group. We expect the grocery store to do seven million dollars a year. Being open three hundred and sixty days, ten hours a day. If you divide that down in an average sale per customer, you're less than seven hundred cars a day. To make that work. In other words, that means you can look at Saturday night or Friday night, those days may be a thousand cars. Then you're looking at weekdays, maybe three to five hundred cars.
Sure.
This data is coming from the total of the United States and has nothing to do with this location. And it's outrageous data. And I can't put it any plainer than that.
So in other words, you're telling us that our nights and weekends will never be quiet again, not even close to quiet. Because people are shopping nights and weekends. Fifteen hundred cars on a Saturday morning. Even feed for my house.
You're taking a lot of proportions.
No.
Do you have anybody signed now to do that seven million?
I think we're getting a little.
Pardon?
I think it's really important.
I have one more question with respect to the, the study itself. When you look, when I look at, I believe it's table, table one. It's the two thousand and eight peak capacity analysis. Unsignaled existing conditions.
Yes.
That's just the intersection as it is today.
Yes.
And then for all of the various turns, you rate them, okay?
Correct.
Scale of A to F.
Yes.
A meaning it's fine, F means probably not very good.
Yes.
Right, and so in terms of the various turns, as it is currently constructed, it's an AAC, BCC.
Yes.
Okay. Table two says unsignaled with supermarket operations. Does that, does table two assume that the, um, additional turning lanes have been installed?
Yes.
Cause those, just for purposes of the audience, are A, A, B, E, I think very good, C, C, E, and.
Yes, you see the performance go down.
All right.
I, I got a couple of questions, I don't know.
We're not in an open session, so the questions are going to be very limited. Yes, go ahead.
My name's Elliot Olson, I'm a resident of North Hudson. In nineteen seventy-two, I went to work with Super Value as coordinator of market analysis. I started my own firm in nineteen seventy-five. I've been doing market analysis, work feasibility studies for supermarkets now for over thirty-four years. Thirty-six years, time flies. The, uh, I work all across the US and in the, in the world. The site location model called LOCUS, which we've leased to other firms, and we project what supermarkets are going to do. The, uh, we can talk about the traffic counts and so forth, the engineer is probably, you know, fairly on, on the traffic counts. If they would do an average basket size of about twenty-eight dollars. A store here in more of a convenience location, I tend to think it would be less than that, which means that your traffic counts are going to go up. I would say they're probably going to go up by one point five to, uh, twice the, uh, the traffic at which he's anticipated. That would be if the store would do a hundred and forty thousand. You've got about thirty-five thousand people, or thirty-five hundred people, maybe it's grown to four thousand within the trade area. With at forty dollars.
The trade. Yeah, the trade, the trade area is different.
Yes, but the, um, but within the town itself, you're looking at about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars total potential. The a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy. The trade area, depending upon what you do, you also are starting to run into other supermarkets. You've got the county market, the, uh, um, Encantano Foods. You've got, uh, J and Rs up there, you've got, uh, the Fresh Natural and so forth. We're loaded with supermarkets here. Just off the top of my head, what you're looking at is a, if the supermarket one goes in, it'll be lucky to do eighty thousand dollars a week. Which means it's going to be out of business in six to nine months. That's something you're looking at, and what are you going to be looking at alternative uses for? That's your big thing right now. You know, I've, I've only been here a couple of years, I look at the, uh, when I drive, uh, down thirty-five right now. From a standpoint of a, uh, it's, uh, it's certainly, it's not well planned, it's not well zoned. And I don't know if you guys have got, you know, a long range plan that's going to really step up the look on thirty-five value. And add economic benefit to it, you know, that's, that's certainly going to be your decision. But I'm telling you right now, and the only thing I'm telling you is that you can build a store there, but it isn't going to fly as a supermarket. I would be, you know, more, uh. You're probably going to end up with a, uh, something like a Super America or a Holiday, a gas station with, uh, with some groceries to it. You're not going to get a full supermarket in there. Maybe you can get a Super Run or something, if that's going to satisfy the town needs. But from a standpoint of having a thirty thousand square foot supermarket, where right now the average supermarket in the US is about eight dollars a square foot. That's about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a week, add for a thirty thousand square footer, which is a lot less, or a lot more, excuse me, than the hundred and forty. A thirty thousand square feet of a hundred and forty cannot make money, it won't make money, and it will be under.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate the input, I appreciate the fact that that's the business you're in. And I, I wish your input had been at one of the previous six public hearings. Now, in, in fairness to, you know, the board in terms of considering.
You're, you're going to be voting on stuff?
That's right.
You know, I didn't know it then, you know, from that standpoint, I live up the block or whatever, I don't, I don't have.
It's the very issue that's been discussed six times already. Okay, I mean, it's not, it's, it's not a new, and I appreciate the input, I really do, okay? Cause the board ultimately has to make decisions hopefully based on information. Dean, I'm going to ask you to respond to that, obviously, which says, the business can't fly.
First of all, his market area is not the thirty-five hundred. The market area is all the way down through downtown. And Holden and the surrounding area. Calculations have already been done by other grocers, and they believe that this is a profitable location. Now, research has already been done that he's talking about. Do you have that research?
Okay.
No.
All right.
I had a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Yes.
In terms of Kevin's note of May 29th, I'd just like to go through them, and maybe we might be talking about these twice, but in number one, we talked about upgrading Station Lane to a West Dot Type B modified intersection, including an exclusive right turn lane on West Approach. I'd like to, the question that I have is, maybe you can answer this one fell swoop. There's one, two, three, four, five bullet points there that really relate to construction and modification of that intersection. If we didn't build the grocery store, what one of those would we need to do or not need to do, if you're following me?
Oh, if you didn't build the grocery store?
We didn't, yeah.
Um, I guess they're all fairly related. You could get away with none of them.
Okay, so the grocery store, development of that area and putting a grocery store in there really means we've got to, and let me, let me just make mention of them. Upgrade the intersection with an exclusive right turn lane on the West Approach that would be coming out of Station Lane. Construct an exclusive right turn lane from the north into Station Lane that's coming south on Highway 35. There would be a right turn lane that would be needed there.
Yes.
Improve the south approach on State Trunk Highway 35 to include an exclusive left turn lane with geometrics conforming to West Dot Facilities Development Manual. That means coming north on, on Highway 35, we'd need a, we'd need to widen the road, obviously, and put a left turn lane there. Going into Station Lane. Install underground electrical conduits and pull boxes for future signals on State Trunk Highway 35 and Station Lane intersection. And then the last one is construct a sidewalk trail system on Station Lane from State Trunk Highway 35 to the grocery store site. So you're saying none of those would be required if this grocery store was not being installed there?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't have written the report, I guess, and yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have it.
But Joe, one, perhaps we can add to that question and say, if it wasn't a grocery store, but it was A, and you can fill in the blank.
Yeah.
Would we still need to be doing some of or all of these improvements?
Some of would be fair to say, yeah.
We don't know what the traffic would be, depending on what the particular commercial establishment would be. A grocery store might be higher, well, grocery store is probably lower than a, than a.
Convenience store?
Than a convenience store.
Much lower.
But, but certainly less than, apartment building would be less.
Right.
Or a professional building, or a retail store of whatever.
Depends on what the retail store was.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's, that's I think a key piece of this.
But again, my point is, we don't know what they are.
Exactly. But you would still have to perform some of these.
I don't know that we know that. I don't know that we know that. I don't know what the tipping point is.
That wasn't the study.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, not to belabor confusion, but I just wanted to make that particular comment. I don't have any, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have any other questions at this time, anyway.
You'd use that number of 100 cars per hour. Is that defined as sort of the tipping point?
On a, on a isolated or a, not an isolated, but on the left turn movement, when it reaches the threshold of 100, I can't quote it exactly, but I believe manuals that I've read have stated that left turn lanes should be strongly considered, or something on that.
Yeah, I'm just going to make a point in looking at this, just so it can be on record. And let me go to my notes here.
So basically, while you're looking at that currently word about 26 cars per hour.
Right around 30, somewhere in there.
Right around 30, so we're at about 30% of that point regardless, with nothing there.
Yes.
And so if we doubled or tripled that, we would be in the same situation with Department of Transportation requiring some type of roadway safety changes.
Yes.
I had a comment here. If we, if we look at it right now, at 2008, the existing traffic, what I did is I added up the amount of traffic that would be either going down or coming back from, on Station Lane, on a peak period, based on your data. And it looks to me, going westbound on Station Lane, there'd be 40 vehicles per hour. There is now, eastbound, it's 26 coming up to that intersection, just totaling up those numbers. And I think that's right. In 2018, with the growth in the, in the Village and the developments, in particular this development, we're now talking about 152 cars going down Station Lane, which is up from 40, and it is coming eastbound, it's 125, which is 26 more. So just apples and apples, if you look at 2008 versus 2018, with this development and other developments taking place, we're looking at four times the traffic going down westbound on St. or on Station Lane, and five times the traffic coming back eastbound. That's, that's my calculations, and.
Over what period of time?
Over, it's the peak, it's vehicles per hour from 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And what I'm saying is, that's, that's, that's a number that is a substantial difference from what it is now.
So at peak, how many cars a minute is that?
Peak, how many cars a minute? It is roughly four and a half cars a minute and one every 10 seconds.
You're talking two hours now.
No, no.
Peak hour within the four to six range?
It's peak hour from four to six. That's not the total number of cars in that two hour period. It's vehicles per hour. Am I, am I missing something?
Yeah, because not necessarily the peak, when you're, it's a calculation that's not going to be solid four to six, that many cars, a possibility of that.
That's right, but I mean, that's what we're basing this all on.
I understand that, but it's, you're not going to have a car every second, 10 seconds for two hours happening, that's not there. That's a possibility.
You know, I.
We can debate what traffic load is going to be, and none of us had the answer.
Talk to the engineer on that one, I guess. I'm just looking at the numbers.
I don't have them reduced like you do.
All I'm saying is, there's a possibility that it's, the numbers that I have, whether it's a possibility now versus a possibility 2018, it's four to five times more traffic on that, right?
They're still using, they're still using the fictitious calculation of 2,000 cars a day. That's what we can't get you to understand. Well, you see, you're starting with the wrong something to take it.
Are you saying the traffic impact analysis is flawed because of that?
Yes, absolutely, because he's taking a national figure of 2,000 cars a day. Does not exist as we have.
Okay, you made your point, and this gentleman made his point as well, so I appreciate both of those. Are there other questions from the board to, to the members of Cedar Corp? If not, then the next thing, motion, the next motion would be to accept the engineer's traffic study. And what it means is that the village says, okay, to the extent that we do proceed, then we need to continue to consider these, you know, as we, as we would, or as we move into the other conditional use issues, and it would also then rationalize why that would be a cost absorbed by the developer. It doesn't, we just arbitrarily said, yeah.
I would so move.
So move.
I'll second that.
Let's go back nine minutes.
We did have one question from the floor, if it's possible to take it.
Uh, not on this motion, I can't.
Okay.
Take it afterwards. All right. Other questions, discussion on the board? If not, all in favor of the motion to accept the impact analysis study, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign, motion carried. Okay. All right, now, there was a question?
Tim?
Yeah, my understanding is, is that all of this infrastructure's cost will be falling on the developer, correct?
Right. Number five, which is the issue at hand, which is, the board is currently looking at a recommendation from the Plan Commission to approve the conditional use permit for a particular lot in question. There are a number of already established conditional use items associated with this property. In fact, there are 18 right now. I would suggest that to the extent that, I'm working off the assumption, that to the extent that there are any others added, we continue to use this document, which is the Plan Commission's recommendation, to approve this. They have 18. Now, we obviously have the right to take anything off that, and we could eliminate number six and six and number nine, but we can also add numbers 19 through 77 as well, okay? So just for purposes of, as we go forward and make comments, suggestions, if we keep that as our primary source document, I think it'll just be a little bit easier. I'll just give you two seconds. All right. We could spend time going through the various items that have already been conditionally required by the Plan Commission, but I think the question is, are there additional ones? I mean, I would think that we would want to include the recommendations from the TIA study as submitted tonight.
And that is number, that is item number one, he has.
Well, there is.
No, that's a different memo.
Am I on the wrong page?
At the end of the conditional use.
The next page of the right-hand document that you have.
This one?
Open it up. Okay.
It says memo from Kevin Oymes. That's when you talk about that, since this new one is made.
Oh, I see. Thank you. Thank you.
Number 19 completes number 11. It's the TIA study reference. So the conditional use permit would be to include, include the, I'll just call it, infrastructure, traffic, traffic items identified in the TIA study. There's no specific date on this?
As presented to the board on June 3rd.
From Cedar Corp, okay. As presented, okay.
Presented and approved by the board. Accepted. Much better.
Accepted. On June 3rd, okay, so that'd be number 19. Now, there, there has been some other issues raised by residents as well. And let me just try to remind people what the whole purpose of conditional use permits is. It's to presumably allow the village to exercise some degree of control over when any business comes into an area. Will there, to the extent that there are issues, can they be eliminated or mitigated? Rather than, as occurs in some municipalities, you know, they don't have that control, so that's what conditional use permits allow us to do. One of the issues that was raised in the, in the past is whether or not, you know, is the, just, I'll call it, I'm going to be very simplistic, is tar, and is the roadway on Station Lane compatible with an increased level of traffic, which clearly will come about? And I don't know the answer to that question, so Kevin, I'm going to ask you, just, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yep. It was part of, in my revised comments, item number three, that was one of my issues, not really knowing what the thickness is out there for the asphalt in the base course. Victor needs to, you know, physically go out there and do some little bores and just verify what we have out there, potentially do like a pavement analysis based on some of the truck volumes that we're going to see and the car volumes. Thinking, you know, we're going to want to see around four inches of asphalt with about eight inches of base. I'm not, not sure what's out there right now, but I believe that Dean's on board. It's part of the improvements, it's part of the 35, that there would be some additional work on Station Lane to accommodate this traffic. I know there's been some statements that have been made before.
And I'm, and I'm going to kind of break this down, and I'm really kind of dealing with here just the thickness issue, because it was, I think it's a legitimate issue that was raised previously.
Right.
Which was, to the extent that Station Lane needs to be upgraded, either in base and/or in blacktop. That would be a part of this rebuilding.
Are most of your comments on here already either addressed by adding number 19, or already in the prior.
The only other one that I want.
Plan Commission's recommendations?
The only one, other one that, you know, I know there's been discussions that the last board meeting, part of the conditional use permit that was being considered was, you know, the Plan Commission had made a request for the Village Board to look at angled parking instead of what's been proposed now is perpendicular, just because of the one-way traffic configuration, the one entrance in and the one entrance out. We just think it'd be more conducive for traffic patterns if it was angled, to just for avoidance of people trying to use for an exit, you know, the entrance coming in, kind of directs them towards that exit point. I know Dean had said that, you know, there would be some limitations by going to the, by going to the angled parking, just because you will lose a number, some number of parking spaces, but I think it's something that needs to be looked at and considered.
Would it be your recommendation to do it?
Yes.
Okay. Now, why don't we just modify number six and make it straightforward and say approximately 114 angled parking spaces are approved with the, are approved?
That would be sufficient.
But Kevin, does the angled, will that take away some of the space? Will that be fewer spaces? It does mention reduction.
If we put 15 degree in, we lose two car spaces per total run.
That, I mean, that's where the give and take is going to end up being, is the number of parking stalls. That'll actually be part of the development, but.
Well, clearly, the, the Plan Commission took it up at great length and discussed it. In fact, they made a note here even in their comments, which said that the, the board may decide that they want to go to the, to the angled parking. So they. So, they, to some extent, even anticipated that we, we would want to do that. It sounds like a common sense thing to do. Okay. Now, over time, that road is going to experience more traffic, just because it is now serving a commercial purpose versus some street that's not, okay? Now, on the assumption, whether, whether the current road, road base and tar thickness is adequate or not, that gets fixed going forward from Highway thirty-five at least down to that intersection. It would seem that there should be a change in the allocation as to how we, when it comes time to repair that street ten or fifteen years down the road. And I'm throwing this out for discussion. The road is gonna get used more, obviously, not because more residents showed up, but because of commercial traffic coming and going. It would seem to me that in terms of sharing that cost, we currently take a road repair and split it fifty-fifty between the residents, or the village and the property owners. Would seem like in this case, it ought to be like fifty, fifty percent to the commercial entity involved, then the remaining fifty gets split twenty-five, twenty-five. And I'm throwing that out.
I'm not sure what our, our policy, our special assessments policy, does that cover that?
Just like what Larry was, it's a fifty-fifty split, just like the project that we did last, last fall, fifty percent is-
I mean, the residents had raised an issue, you know, several meetings ago about, you know, won't this road get pounded, at least, you know, from here to here? It's not gonna get pounded a lot more than a typical street, and the answer is, yeah, it does. Why? Not because so many residents did, but because of the commercial development. Should there be a sharing of that cost?
And that's something that could be, you know, as part of the developer's agreement, could be drafted, and if you feel that that should be a condition, that's more than fair. I mean, that, that would be agreed upon as part of the agreement, developer's agreement, those costs, those maintenance costs down the future.
Well, I'm assuming all of this stuff gets, gets rolled into the developer's agreement. I can't remember this thing in particular. I, I know the, the issue of the developer's agreement had been raised in the Plan Commission, but I'm working off the assumption that all of this stuff gets memorialized and documented in, in a developer's agreement. Dean, how do you react?
I, I'm sorry, I missed, is that ongoing repair or currently to get it up to a standard?
Ongoing, ongoing. Ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road, that chunk, chunk of road, you know, could well need significant repair long before you would normally expect it to, because it's getting more traffic.
Wouldn't it typically, the, uh, wouldn't the, uh, what accounts for the taxes that are paid on that piece of property? I'm only thinking of any other business, you can go back to any other one and start taxing them for the use of the road when, don't your taxes reflect the use of a road?
And they do.
And if you're paying most likely ten to twenty times more than-
Actually, they don't, Mark, when you think about it. I mean, our taxes pay for a portion of it. But the other half, you end up paying, all right? And in this particular case, I think this is a little unique, because we're, we're gonna be basically taking what is a pure residential street, converting it to a, uh, a much more residential, commercially used. And going forward, the, the commercial entity is going to benefit disproportionately, okay?
Larry, are you referring to Summers Landing Road?
Yeah, I think that's what it's called.
So, you're anticipating, as we look at this map here, that there will be more traffic going down-
Throwing it up on the table for-
And who would be using this road that currently isn't using this road? I'm looking at the people from, you know, anything outside of this neighborhood, anticipating that they'd come in and go out. I don't see trucks going down here, because that's way out of their way.
No, and, and I've only extended it down to that intersection, 'cause that's where the property runs.
Down here.
Yeah, how far, I didn't, I didn't go down Summers Landing Road.
Summers Landing.
To that first left.
Yeah.
From Highway thirty-five down to the first intersection where you could take a left, or you could kind of view it to the right. Certainly, the first hundred feet are gonna take the hardest pounding, but there will be some incremental additional traffic as people elect to go left instead of going right. As well as could some of the possible trucks.
Would this be part of the conditional use permit or part of the developer's agreement? And I realize a lot of it runs in, but I don't think that some of it relates to the conditional use side of it.
I think it should be in the developer's agreement, 'cause the conditional use permit's an annual thing. Developer agreements for perpetuity.
And this one for sure would be.
If it's a conditional use permit, part of it, that could be changed each year.
I don't really care which document it ends up in, but I think it's an issue with residents raised.
That can be changed if they, I think, in my estimation, it should be a developer's agreement.
So, there's an understanding that that would go to the develop, you know, developer's agreement?
The one thing I would like to see in there is, and he has already agreed to this, to reverse the village for the cost of the traffic study.
That was part of the motion. When it was originally made. Well, and that's conditional upon us approving the conditional use permit.
Right, so now we're approving it, so I thought maybe it's-
So, not there yet.
Well, I, take that back, yeah. It's true.
So, now, as members of the board, are there other? As, as you look at the conditional use permit requirements and/or developer's agreement issues? Are there other ones that you feel need to be dealt with?
Looking at the fire inspector's report, Larry, with the focus on the two hydrants, with, uh, definition of what is required, I didn't see specifically on the conditional use permit those in there, and maybe I missed it. But the report they bring, number twenty-eighth, two thousand and seven.
I think that's a good point, maybe all of those.
That would be, um-
Where the fire chief was recommending.
That should be developed.
It's, yeah.
That doesn't-
That should be developed.
Okay, that's a development, okay.
Okay, that's a good point, too.
Okay, so the fire chiefs. Item number twenty-two. Even though it's a developer's agreement. Fire chiefs, what was the report, and what was the date on that report?
That was November twenty eighth, two thousand and seven.
November twenty eighth, seven, okay. That make sense to you, too?
Yeah.
Other items?
I'm looking at these things off of thirty-five. The building, there's a fifty-foot building setback off of thirty-five. When they weren't getting an access, there was discussion, somebody had brought up, Chris, the DOT was going to negotiate some of that from the DOT, so you could push the building forward, and finally get it out my backyard. And that's when you brought up with the DOT to take some of that out of the building.
That's a good question, and I think, and you're right, I, uh, that did come up before. I don't know that we have, I don't, I don't think this board or, although I know that in the correspondence, uh, I've associated with this over the last seven months, there does make reference to the DOT being willing to look favorably upon that. Now, having said that, we'll just work off the assumption that we're gonna do that, we're gonna slide the whole building forward. What does that do, though, to the parking lot, to the driveway? To the extent, I mean, if I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that there is some correspondence that says the DOT would likely favorably consider a smaller setback. Do you recall that?
Well, I know, you know, there is the fifty-foot building setback and, you know, that-
That's a DOT requirement?
That was actually part of the plat, if you look at, when the plating process went through, that was part of the condition. The building itself is beyond the fifty-foot setback. I think what, you know, the, the idea was to try to, since it's such huge right-of-way in that area, to try to gain some land from the DOT, to try to move the building closer.
We worked out the assumption DOT's not gonna sell land. But to the extent that, like, you know, the request from the residents is, could we practice, from my practical perspective, move the building forward, and I'll call it the front setback.
That, that's gonna change the configuration of the parking lot itself. I know there's some electrical, um, items up in the northeast corner of that lot. The one exit from the development is fairly close to those facilities, there's, there's some kind of a easement that is on there for those electrical items in there.
So, was that, was that offered by the DOT, kind of a sleeves-out-of-the vest? Offer from them?
And that's something that the developer would have to request for a condition, to, you know, to go below the fifty-foot setback. I guess it's nothing per se of the village should get involved.
We've been dealing with the issue of the parking lot, and we, we've said it's okay to make it smaller, and you had documentation that says all kinds of municipalities are shrinking the amount of space. For a whole variety of reasons, not the least of which is minimize the previous service that are, that are maintained there.
Is that meeting minute, are those meeting minutes in this packet someplace? I thought they were.
The one from the DOT, not this one.
The one that we had with the DOT.
No.
I just saw that.
Are, are they?
Yeah, I think they are.
I don't know, I copied and re-copied.
Every meeting that's ever been had on this subject was in this.
Yeah. Larry, I think the concern that that would, would arise there, and I think it'd be wonderful to move it as far forward as is humanly possible, but-
Well, 'cause I know we did talk about it real early on.
Right. I think with this current configuration, with having moved the building, making things the way that they accommodate that lot, the way it's currently, in its current form, it allows for a hundred and fifty feet from the parking lot entrance point to the center line of the highway, which I think as you move that closer, any vehicles making a right turn would start to back up over the entrance to the lot, and it could probably open Pandora's box. Not knowing anything about traffic studies, but a hundred and fifty car, feet, you know, an average twenty-five foot car holds six cars with a little bit of room. It's not a lot, so as you would move that forward, it would reduce the amount of cars able to be staged to take a right turn heading south.
It's right on the top of the-
I've, I've got that, I was just looking for what they said about, uh-
At the top?
Well, I know that we've done a lot to try and take all the noise off the back of the building. The compressors on the top are now encased, and so the sound goes up, so that, that's helpful. Whether you could move it thirty feet, maybe that's in question, but, you know, from a sound perspective and, in terms of what the original request as well as tonight's is. If you moved it five feet, ten feet, I mean, you know, how much of a change, how many dominos start falling on the wrong side of the equation, I guess is my question. I don't personally have any trouble moving it, but if it screws up the whole plan, then-
The issue being that we have a ten-foot, approximately a ten-foot setback from the highway right-of-way.
Ten foot?
Ten foot, in other words, if I hold this up for you, there's our property line, there's our parking lot. Any of this that moves ten foot is required for the setback?
What are we talking about now, about the setback of the building itself?
No, it's just for the property.
No, not the parking, I mean, the parking lot, the parking-
You can't change one without changing the other. If the building is here, the twenty, you need all these distances exactly.
Yeah, we understand that.
Moves three feet, this has to move three feet.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that you can't go forward, and the DOT has made it very clear, they're not gonna sell land.
Right.
Okay. So, we're not gonna get into their right-of-way, they've just made that very clear.
So, we're stuck.
There's only ten feet then, it's a ten-foot setback from the right-of-way.
I was somewhat under the impression that there's also, is there not also a setback for the building itself?
That's fifty feet, but we're more than that already because of the parking lot being on this side.
There's a fifty-foot setback from the highway fromage, here, this line right here. That's a building setback, not a parking lot.
That's right.
The building is-
Yeah, I've got it.
Almost a hundred feet back from that property. Or from the highway setback.
You're saying to the extent that you moved, obviously you gotta leave the property alone, property where it's at. But to the extent that you move the building, the negative is that the parking spaces shrink?
Right. Move the parking lot the same distance you move the build.
No, but I, but you can't.
Can't.
Well, I'm just talking about taking the house and I'm just moving it around on the lot, so to speak.
Does your code calls for a certain depth of parking stall, certain back-around distance?
Yeah, but I'm saying we're prepared to waive that.
No, you can't waive that.
You can't, I mean, you need the, you need the distance in the aisles here and, and the length in the spots, I mean, the reason-
No, I understand you gotta have the parking spaces at a designated size, otherwise, 'cause we're not all gonna go back to drive the Volkswagen bus. But in terms of moving, just trying to move the building further away from the resident.
If you wanna take this ten feet, and say you have zero lot line for your parking lot, we can gain ten feet through the whole process.
Yeah.
That's the one thing we could do.
That's the only one thing that's available.
Well, you know, let me throw some mud at the, the water here. At this meeting that we had, which was, I did find the meeting minutes, January seventeenth with the DOT, and I think you were there, weren't you? Terry Fallon was suggesting, because we talked about the, the very wide right-of-way that the Highway thirty-five has, and you just showed it again there. I don't know what it is, it must be-
Hundred and twenty-five feet.
Hundred and twenty-five feet, I don't know if that's from the center line of the road to the property, or is it from the edge of the road to the property? But it's, it's a hundred and twenty-five feet anyway. And certainly a substantial portion of that could, forgetting about who owns it, if the building, you know, could be a lot closer to Highway thirty-five, and it wouldn't necessarily bother a whole lot of people, let's put it that way, except maybe the DOT. But Terry Fallon, who was, uh, there that day, suggested adding twenty feet, twenty feet of right-of-way access, so the whole building could move twenty feet closer to the highway. The access may stay the same, but the store gets moved a bit further out, on, out of the neighborhood. Hubbard agreed that the twenty-foot would make the neighbors feel considerably better. Cothran also agreed that it was a great suggestion. Sorry. And Kevin Oyam stated that a berm could be a bit taller than. Helgerson stated that the, the village developer would have to make a formal request for access of that right-of-way. Now, I was assuming from that dialogue that that area from the DOT, DOT could be made available through some sort of legal ramifications to the developer, 'cause it's not being used. And so, the real estate organization with the DOT is run by Ann Greasy, and if that person was contacted and an argument was made, and I don't know what that entails, but I thought that that area could be made available for this development by moving it out. That was my take on it, that I think is my take on what is presented here, so-
It's not that I don't want that to happen.
Yes. And it muddies the water.
Maybe we would.
Right now.
But I'm finding a real contradiction here between the DOT, on the one hand, you know, we can't put a frickin' sign up there that says, you know, drive carefully, because we got people walking.
Yeah, because they control the signs.
Our road.
Oh, yeah.
And, but, and now they're prepared to, in essence, deed over twenty feet of, 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 of a right-of-way?
They may.
Is there gonna create a jog in the right-of-way?
What's that?
They're prepared to create a permanent jog in the right-of-way?
Or just extend the, well, I don't know about a jog in the right-of-way, but yeah.
If they wanna do it, we can slide that puppy forward.
Yeah.
Hooray!
I'm just saying is, I thought it looked possible.
Did they seem to indicate they would?
They said you'd have to take it up with Ann Greasy.
She was surprised that they made that comment at the meeting.
Really? You talked to Ann?
Have you ever heard of anything like this?
No, I haven't.
Years ago, but in the most, my most recent dealings with DOT has been very much, this is what we do, and this is how we operate.
That's kind of the comment she made to me.
Right.
So she was surprised they'd even entertain that motion at the meeting.
I'd be surprised, the way they've been operating the last five to ten years, that they would even consider selling anything. They're holding it off.
I just assume for the moment, uh, Mr. Hanson, that the DOT said, yeah, we're prepared to do that, whether it's five feet, ten feet, fifteen, twenty feet, whatever the number is. How would that affect that design? Would you then just?
It doesn't affect the design a great deal. The, it's just, it affects redesign and engineering, but it doesn't affect the design a great deal. Except for the stack-up of cars leaving the parking lot for the right-hand turn on the Highway thirty-five.
Because?
Shortens that. If, if you want to gain ten more feet, I think feasibly we can gain ten more feet by offering a zero lot line situation to our parking lot on the east side. And that would mean that all the water flow from the parking lot, which we are now funneling down that ten feet, would be drained into the DOT right-of-way. And so they would be taking all our excess water in that ditch. That would be the engineering complications. And by codes, you're not allowed to do that, and you can't take the water from your property and dump it on somebody else.
Kevin, you obviously work with the DOT a lot more than the rest of us in this room put together. What are your thoughts? I mean, this was a good idea, it's been brought up a couple of times, and I think tonight we need to decide whether or not it's even doable or not.
I, just, the workings that I've had with them, probably the likelihood of them, just like the attorney stated of them granting them additional property. I think that's pretty slim to none. And just, like, just, uh, put some more detail on, you know, the, the ten-foot on that east side of that parking lot. You know, there was going to be a drainage ditch in there, and that's where we're getting our pre-treatment. The, uh, sus- suspended solids reduction. Now, if we remove that, you know, then that, they're going to have to look at other options to try to accommodate that. Which, it could be done, but it's, you know, you'd have to look at some, um, retiretory items like storm scepters or mechanical devices.
First comment, which is, would the DOT buy off on this, and you're saying it's somewhere between slim and none.
Billy Gin doesn't have a hundred and twenty-five feet setback, how would they get by? Did it just, is it only for that little piece of property there that they all ask? Because it doesn't extend that whole.
Doesn't that widen?
A hundred and twenty-five foot width right-of-way is not the full length of thirty-five. It's a real.
Just an area.
It goes that way, and then it goes big like that. I'm assuming that they were anticipating, you know, somewhere before, you know, most of us die, that, you know, they were getting ready to put a four-lane in there. That's the only thing I can think of.
I've seen some old plats too, um, just in some of our surveying records, and there is an old plat up in that area, and I think at one time there used to be an old roadway. Um, and then over time, when the new thirty-five went in, you know, they looked at relocating that, and it's just the way it ended up being for the, the whiffs up through there, because it varies so much.
You've ever worked with a municipality where they've asked the DOT, can we build into your, uh, right-of-way?
I've, I've never seen that, no. I think, yeah, the likelihood of anything like that is slim to none.
I can comment on something regarding that. I worked, um, for the Land Commission for St. Joe's, and they run into the same thing. Their DOT won't budge, doesn't seem to want to budge on things like you're discussing. Doesn't surprise me.
Um, down the road, Kevin, or maybe Bill, you would know. Is there any option in the future of going back to them and requesting another access off Highway thirty-five? I mean, there's nothing that precludes us from doing that.
No, there's nothing to preclude you, and if, if you read the regs, it says that they have to take into consideration all these factors, but they don't. They just say, no, no, no. There's not one decision out there that they've granted it. They just consistently say, no, 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 so. I mean, I think I told you previously, the whole exercise we went through with applying, you know.
Yeah.
And we got the response back, no. It's.
And why did you bother to apply?
Right. Basically, that's, that's what DOT is saying, yeah, we got this process, but go ahead and do it, but you're wasting your time.
Okay. All right. It doesn't sound like we've got an awful lot of options on that. Other issues related to what's here?
Police protection.
Pardon?
Police protection. Probably going to need at least a quarter of a cop or more. With the, like, certainly more patrolling there, you're bringing more cars into the area that are going to be cruising the streets, looking for open garages. And you're going to have more shoplifting and calls going in there.
Mark, you have any comments on that? Hate to catch you off-guard.
I was going to say, other than that's the first time that it's, it's come up. I mean, I, I haven't done any research on it whatsoever, and I, I mean, I'm happy to, but I, I guess I can't even comment. Uh, yeah, it's going to bring more cars into the village, and that's going to be an issue. Uh, whether that relates to crime, burglary is property crime, I, I couldn't tell you right now. Uh, you know, I know of the, of the grocery stores that are in the city of Hudson. There's kind of a, a wave of every once in a while, there's in-store theft, you know, people running out the, the front doors with carts full of meat. Whether or not that's going to translate, I don't know. But I, but I would like to look into it if this does in fact go forward, so.
Okay. Other comments of the board?
I'll have an actual store sign that's going to be operating at that location. You're going to be theoretically doing a conditional use for a grocery store, yet as of this time, there is absolutely no documentation of any grocery store that's going to own there.
Uh, yeah, the, the conditional use permit request is for a full-service grocery store. Pardon?
Who, who's going to run it? There's nothing, no documentation anywhere that shows who is going to operate that and who's coming to run it.
Right now, you're building an empty grocery store.
Exactly. And it'll, and it's, that building is being approved as a grocery store, owned and operated by the applicant, Dean Hanson.
You're making a decision to build, to allow the building of a structure that's going to cause great havoc to a neighborhood that hasn't had that before. All the life is going down, devaluation of property, you're making decisions based on, there should be some credibility to the actual existence or the credibility of it.
I mean, how can you go to a bank and get a loan for a business plan if you don't have somebody going to operate the business? And why that's not being disclosed is, is, and why the people on the village board are not concerned about that.
Folks, we're not in an open session, okay? We've had six meetings on the issue. We, we've allowed discussion tonight. All of the issues have been discussed, and ultimately, at some point in time, the open public hearings end, and the board has to figure out what it is they want to do. So we've been trying to, to do that over the last seven months. That's why we've had extended Plan Commission meetings, that's why we've had extended public hearings at the board level as well. But at some point in time, the board just simply has to fish or cut bait. Okay? Now, whether it's tonight or next month, you know, is somewhat immaterial, but we need to move on, okay? I mean, what are the issues?
Are you going to do a conditional use permit for a given size, say a minimum of a thirty thousand square feet, so it is a supermax?
Well, the size has already been dictated by the drawings.
So it will be a thirty thousand square feet.
How, how big is it?
Thirty-two thousand, thirty-two thousand.
Eight sixty-five.
I'll entertain one more question, yes.
Okay, um, this is a broad-based, more of a comment, I guess, than a question. I'm a fifth-generation Hudsonite, my grandfather was on the county board, my father was on the Hudson town board. I've seen both sides of the fence, I know people have to make difficult decisions. Um, I watched land, family land that I would have loved to control, different things happened to it that broke my heart. But sometimes you just have to come to the realization that there's zoning made, and if you don't own the land, you can't control everything that's going to happen. This is a matter of growth and development, and things happen. You have a very vocal group here, but there, I've also heard a ton of people say they would, they would like to have a store because they don't want to have to drive all the way up the hill, especially with the price of gas, et cetera. But people just have to be understanding of their elected officials and that there, there's more than one side to every story. That's called in.
Were there other, the last, we, this is, this is June, so we, we, the item was not discussed in, uh, May. Were there other items that we discussed as a board back in April?
The big issue in April was that the access to Highway thirty-five. And that's why we decided that we needed to do that traffic impact analysis, and so we got funds for that and charged Kevin.
Okay. I knew we had, I knew, I knew we had, and I looked up in the minutes, and I couldn't see anything material, material nature either. As I'm, I'm, I'm just skimming through this, uh, list of conditional use, and I'm assuming that there should be one which says that, uh, no construction or permits will be issued until the developer's agreement is executed. Is that normal?
Yeah, and usually isn't that in there?
I don't see it in there. Now, maybe I.
In Kevin's, January tenth, two thousand eight.
Yeah. Oh, January, oh, it says January tenth, I just want to read that very quickly.
We got the January tenth, I think that covered all those issues.
I'm aware enough to take any of this stuff for granted.
I'm looking at the Plan Commission meeting minutes of January sixteenth.
Well, you could probably solve it by adding the twenty-nine family, what is this?
Oh, this is the January tenth. Well, I mean, there's, there's nothing wrong with being redundant on something like this.
It's January eighth number, Kevin's in this one, is it?
January tenth? What was it we were looking for?
Yeah, that's what he was looking for, he was, I said that, uh, Kevin usually has a condition on the subject. Yeah.
Are you suggesting that it number seven?
Yeah.
Does that say the same thing as no permits will be issued?
Yeah.
Okay, so the developer can't do diddly's until he gets stamp of approval and copy of the approved plan from the state, uh, and approval from Division of Northern Building Official, okay, which doesn't speak to the, and all other applicable governing agencies prior to commencing construction.
And in fact, there is, there is a document in here from Brian Ward. There it is.
And where is it specifically stated that, uh, developer's agreement is also required?
That's.
I would just incorporate the May twenty-ninth, you know.
That's.
Where it says, uh, the tenth and the May twenty-ninth.
The developer's agreement comes above because he's at, because he's going to fund the double improvements. Then kicks in the developer's agreement.
By statute? By statute?
So by, yeah, that's, that's gives you standing answer to the developer's agreement, yeah.
Okay, so we don't need an additional, we don't need, you wouldn't need a, a specific, um.
No. You grant the conditional use.
So you're saying my issue is stupid?
No, I'm not saying it's stupid. I never say that.
Unnecessary.
Well, it doesn't hurt to be redundant sometimes, I'm just saying that it's implicit in the whole process. And the, um, does this?
Well, I think your comment was, if we look back to the Kevin Oyam letter, letter of January tenth, which was accepted by the Plan Commission and made a part of their recommendation, yes, it's a part of this one.
Right.
And that that's, that that's adequate.
Right.
Okay. Other issues? Questions?
Well, you're talking about the developer's agreement as number six.
That's next.
Yeah.
But that's.
Other questions on this issue?
On the conditional use permit? I don't know if it's time to talk in general or specific, or, or kind of indication of where I'm headed, but I wouldn't like making a comment, if it would be okay.
Go ahead.
I really like the idea of having a grocery store in North Hudson. I think the people of the village have overwhelmingly thought that that was a really good idea. We have limited commercial property within the village to do that. And one owned by Dean, and he came forward to the village and made a proposal. Uh, as you all know, sometime last fall, I think it was. And the plan, you, you know, when you look at commercial buildings on commercial property, if you go up on the hill, you, you see the commercial property, and they take maximum use of that property. And to a certain extent, I would say the building is more or less shoehorned into, and bear with me, uh, this property up there, and over here, that is. If you go up on the hill, a lot of that property, a lot of the buildings are shoehorned into the available space that's there. But a lot of that is not really next to residential areas. And so I, I sympathize and I'm compassionate with those people that live around the structure that Dean would like to build there. Um, and so there are, I think there are five single-resident houses there, and then a couple of multi-residential facilities next to it, for a total of seven buildings that more or less surround that property. And I'm sensitive to that. I was thinking last fall that, you know, could we make this a win-win? Can we, can we make it? The people that are going to be living around it aren't necessarily going to like it a whole lot. Nobody likes a great big building that goes up necessarily right next to them, and I sympathize with those people there and sympathize with the traffic and the noise that they're sensitive to. But I thought, is there a way of, of making this work? And when I originally saw Dean's plan, you know, uh, the plan seemed to me, you know, with the berm areas and the trees that he was going to provide, and, but mainly, the two access points off of Station Lane and Highway thirty-five, I thought, well, you know, that's not too bad. Uh, I thought personally. So, you know, we've talked about this for some time and since that time, Dean, you know, you, you have increased the, the size of the building by ten percent. And so it's bigger than your original plan. And so I'll be very honest with you and with everybody here, the board included, that if somebody would have told me back in October, November, when we first said this is a possibility, that there was going to be no access off of Highway thirty-five into that, I would have said, you know, I don't think this is a good idea. And so I just want everybody here to know, that's my thought process. I think, I like the idea of, of a grocery store there. The, the plans that I see, you know, it looks like a beautiful building. You, you spent a lot of time developing all of that and spent a lot of time with us. And I think it would be good for the village to have, but my underlying problem is now we've got, according to the traffic analysis, we've got four to five times more traffic running down that road and none of it coming out of that, of, of an access off of Highway thirty-five that I saw in the original plan. And so that's fundamentally my problem. And that's why I don't like the conditional use permit that I see right here. And if anybody has any questions on that, I hope I could clear that up, but that's my point of view. Okay?
Sure.
End of my story. Thank you for your time.
Just for purposes of getting the issue on the table, you know, I'll make the motion. Somebody wants a second. If nobody seconds it, obviously it dies for lack of a second. Then we have further discussion and then it's up or down. Unless someone feels that there is a need to table for lack of information. I think we've gotten about as much information as we can swallow.
No, I don't, I disagree.
What's that?
I think, I think we've been talking about this, that the, the second access, what can we do with that land? I have a huge issue with that right-of-way and I've, Joe has, I've made, mentioned him at a lot of meetings and I'm nervous about, I don't know why, I think it'd be worthwhile to make an effort to get that access or to get that right-of-way. I'm tired of having the DOT dictate demands to us and they, they don't even take care of the road anymore hardly. And we have to live on it and we have to try to put buildings on it and it's a good spot for a store, but look at how much of that land is just sitting when that thing could be pushed forward or anything for that matter. That right-of-way is ridiculous up there.
Mm-hmm.
And I think for, it, it would be a shame, I mean, it's like everything else I've seen go on through here, it's a half-ass effort. And way back in the beginning, there should have been some focus on this other driveway and somehow that just disappears and nothing happens and we're not certainly going to spend any money looking into it. Well, I think it's time that we did take a look at if you're serious about this or buy the damn road from this state or something. But I mean, we dance around this stuff and, and now we're going to try to, you know, wedge something in again? It's always that way up here because nobody takes the step forward.
So what do you want to do for, what do you want to do for, as a next step?
I don't know what the timeline is, I know it's late or in the process, but I really have, I, I thought, my brother got access on the other side of the road for the River Bank and Mama Maria's. It can be done. I thought it would get done on the other side. Either somebody wasn't good enough or somebody didn't give a big enough shit. I don't know, but it can be done.
Did they get access after they were originally told no?
I don't remember the details. You'd have to talk to him, but there was no driveway there before and now there is. And tell, and do, I would love to see a DOT guy here because I'd tell them the exact same thing. They can stick it right up wherever they go because they have their set of rules and they just stick by them. You try to abide by their crap. To me, I'd just put the driveway in. Hell yeah.
That's an option. Go ahead, Dean.
No, but, you know, I, I know I'm exaggerating, I know it sounds rough, but why do we have to roll over on all this stuff?
No, are, are you suggesting that we?
I suggest.
That we approach the DOT with respect to that right-of-way?
I'd really be remiss in, in, and I would like to see this store, I would like to see the impact soften as much as possible. I know there's going to be a conflict one way or the other, always is with this thing, but it's a shame that there's going to be all that land sitting out in front of that store that could be used for parking that'll never be a roadway. It won't even be mowed by anybody.
So are you suggesting that we table this and then contact?
I'm suggesting if, if, if it requires the village spending the money, I think it's well worth it.
Well, first I think we take, I think what you're saying is table the motion and then we get a hold of the DOT and see what their will.
I think it's got to be a serious effort. I won't, I, 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 it's got to be a serious effort. Yeah, I, and basically asking the rest of this board, going to have to open up the wall and go after this thing and it'll set a precedent. Otherwise you're, I know there's a bunch of land left, up there left, but there will be other development there.
But we, we don't know for sure whether or not we'd have to open the wall or not, but in certainly, I mean, one more month would not be the end of the world.
Well, I'm not going to go into it thinking that you're not going to.
Okay. Now, to the extent that we want to approach the DOT and I don't know.
Well, has anybody yet? What have we gotten? Who did approach a DOT?
Well, we applied for the access.
Yeah, and what was that?
Well, we had, we had, we had.
Did anybody up here talk to? Anybody walk the property with them? What did we do? Just do a letter thing?
No, they were here, remember the meeting?
I wasn't invited.
Well, and because we didn't want to have an inadvertent board meeting.
Yeah.
Which is why. But in terms of what you're indicating is, in, or, or so, what you're intimating is let's table this motion and let's figure out what the heck of, heck of we could do potentially with the DOT between now and the time we meet and give it one more shot.
With it, I've seen too much or not enough, things get put around up there. There's a condominium that should have never been there. There's a fourplex right north of Village Inn that probably should have never been there. That should have been a straight stretch, a commercial somewhere along the line, but nobody took the gumption to figure that out. Then you wouldn't have residents upset because they would have never moved there. You know, somewhere along the way, you got to say, hey, let's figure this out the way we'd like to see it rather than just react. And I'm, and I, and I haven't seen a worthwhile effort to get that access. I know you can get one. My brother got one not that long ago. When did that go in? Ten years ago? Eight years ago?
That's about when you could get them yet.
Well, I don't care, what, well, what changed?
The DOT changed.
Who are the DOT?
Their bureaucracy.
Yeah, well.
Do you want to table and take, take one more shot?
I'm throwing it up there. I'm throwing it up there. You're making a hell of a substantial change and there's a, and once it's done, it's done. And it should have been brought up sooner, I think, I don't know.
It has been brought up sooner.
I know, but somebody's got to jump on it.
We said it ain't going to happen because the DOT just basically says no.
Well, I usually don't take no if I go up.
Oh, some of us have noticed that. That's not all bad, by the way.
Well, I'm just, I, I, I don't know.
Mark, I want to ask you, what was the next, let's, let's abide by your recommendation here. So what's the next step? What would we, what would you do? Who would we call? We're not getting anywhere with Mike and Ike, who are these two people here? Ann and, not getting anywhere with them. So the question is, who do they answer to?
I hear somebody's the muscle.
And as Bill just said, it's a bureaucracy and how do you get through that?
Threaten them with something. Tell them you're just going to do it.
Tell me what?
Tell them you're just going to do it.
All right, well, I don't think we necessarily have to lay out a strategy, but what you're saying is let's try to do one.
I think it'd be the best thing for their project, it'd be the best thing and then for it, I, I, I really can't believe.
We all agree.
Can't be done without another access off thirty-five. It's, to tell you the truth.
Is that what?
It, I believe it's a little bit of a push just to funnel it off of one street. I think the access off of thirty-five is only logical. You know, and they talk about no more dri, you know, roads on there? You go two blocks, there's a driveway every hundred feet for, through the rest of here and there's no accidents. Hell, we're so far back up there, you can't even see the highway. I mow half the state property. I live there, you know, I know, it's all theirs. I don't want it, but they could cut it. They don't even, they, like, eh, all right, bullshit.
I think you've made your point.
Yeah, I'd love to sit, you know, next time invite me to a meeting, I'd love to talk to these guys. I think George specifically asked, I didn't come.
As a matter of fact, you did make that request. Do other board members feel the same way? At least take, take one other different?
I'll take one stab at this from a neutral point of view. First of all, I think that we're all in agreement that we want to have as little impact to the residents right around there as possible. I think that if we are asked to spend an amount of money, the village residents' money to try to fight this battle with the DOT, I think it would be a worthwhile effort. But I truly, in my heart of hearts, feel like it's no different than wearing a suit of armor to a nuclear war, thinking you're going to come out alive. And I don't want to waste residents' money. And we are faced with a situation that we all realize it would be better to have an access off of thirty-five. And I couldn't agree with you more, Mark, in that that land out in front is going to be nothing but barren wasteland for our lives and probably our children's lives. And it's sad. It's sad to have to work within the bureaucracy.
Well, the minimum, I'm even just asking for the access.
And, you know, I don't know, Larry, how can we do it, you know? We can't obviously have an open checkbook. I, I feel sympathetic, as Joe does and all of us, on this part for everybody there. We want to have it have as little impact as possible, but we also want to have a grocery store if it is, if there's a possibility of having it work. We've got a developer who has worked as well as possible with everybody. He's jumped through every hoop twice or three times, but you're right, Mark, that, you know, did anybody put up a fight with the DOT? I don't know the answer to that. And where do we go from here to find out if we can get it back?
Well, the answer is, the answer is yes, we did. We jumped through the normal procedural hoops that you do. First you call them down, people met with them and they said, no, you're not going to get it, I mean, you're not going to get it, okay? And so then we do the formal request, you know, that Bill writes. And then they shoot that back and then basically said, and why did you bother to even waste our time filling out this request for them? Because that's what you told us to do. Okay, so then.
Is it possible, Larry, that our next step is to contact Kitty Rose or Sheila?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, are we dealing with a legal issue? Are we dealing with an economic issue? Are we dealing with a, a political issue?
It's a political issue.
So.
If you want to call it a political, it's, to me, it's a bureaucracy.
To me, it's a safety one, too.
Well, I happen to, I happen to agree with you on that. And I would certainly love to do it. And I don't have any, I don't have any diffi, difficulty, you know, waiting another thirty days to see if we can get this, at least get some hint that says.
I say you get somebody up here, you, you hold their feet under the fire. And I mean, you keep on them. The state don't call, they used to have these schmoes that drive around and look at your sides and stuff and they call. Why don't return call? No, they don't call no more. They got tired of calling. I shouldn't be saying that. Pup, don't put that in the paper.
Would it, Larry?
I mean, they got more rules than.
Would it be appropriate for you to have a casual conversation with Kitty Rose?
I have no trouble calling Kitty and Sheila.
Larry, if I could just add one last thing before I get done here. And, and this is a question of Kevin, you know, as you look at this DOT setback, and I've been trying to understand this, Dean's obviously lot one oh five, the lot just to the north is lot two. Is that, is that setback there also or does it go away?
Yeah, yeah, because there's a big sign there. It goes north right in there. That's why you can put another turn lane there.
Okay, okay.
I don't know how far north it goes, but Tim's property does not go.
My property line does not go to thirty-five.
Yeah.
It doesn't.
You got them.
There's a berm between the berm, between the berm.
Thank you. Just trying. I thought, you know, if it was just a niche.
All right, well, I get a sense that, you want to say something? Go ahead.
I just asked.
Okay. You want to go nuts?
I'm lying.
Okay. Then just at least, you know, for purposes of taking one more shot at the, whatever you want to call it.
Doesn't it seem right to take one more shot at it?
Yeah.
I mean, it, to me, it makes sense at least.
Yeah, no.
And stay on them.
The purpose of, of questioning if for some, if we, if we burn every possible hope we can to get this through and they still don't give it to you, then are we still going to shoehorn that monstrosity on that lot using Station Lane?
May well do that. That, that certainly is an option, yes.
Then, you know, you also have an option to rebuild that to C two.
That's true, too. Okay. So I would make a motion that we table this issue until the next board meeting and in an interim, we pursue whatever means we can to try and get it a minimum access off thirty-five.
I'd like to see some timeline on this. I'd like to see at least a minute, you know, get some sort of, uh.
It's unfair, Mr. Hanson, to, to put a timeline.
Within thirty days, you know, within two weeks, get a hold of somebody and see where we go. Does it need somebody to follow through with it or whatever and just?
Draft a mo, articulate a motion.
Well, do we have a motion on the floor regarding this?
I mean, I started to make one, but you want a timeline, which is fine. I have no trouble with that fact, it makes sense.
Okay, I move that within three weeks, Village North Hudson contacts the DOT regarding access off thirty-five. For gaining access off thirty-five.
Direct access.
Direct access off thirty-five.
Do you want to get the motion out to the state rep?
We don't need that in the motion.
I just, all we can do is take action on where we can go from here.
My concern about your motion is too, that it's focused at the DOT. And while they may have the final say, there are other powers that be that may be able to influence their decision. Did I obfuscate that enough?
Yes, and I'm not aware of any, I don't know how to articulate it, you know, those possibilities, but we'd have to, within that three weeks, put together a definite plan of how we're going to try to gain access.
So is your, is your motion to table and to contact?
I believe.
Because right now the board is looking at, we have a conditional use permit.
Without that access, I believe it's better for the store too. Whenever you can get into something better and.
No one's, no, no one's debating the, the value of accomplishing or achieving that outcome.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just looking at the procedural record.
And, and try to get the access.
Okay, so, pardon?
What about addressing the disro, their sale right away? I'd like to talk about that right away.
Yeah. The whole nine yards.
I think that's possible.
Oh, yeah, well, we'll take them for all we can get.
They increased it.
Okay. So it's a move to table and contact the village within three weeks. So Mark has the motion, is there a second?
Yep. Yes, I second.
All right. Further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We're going to take five-minute recess.
Larry, would that then postpone item six as well?
Item number six, we'll, I think we can table. Need to actually formally table, yeah, we do. Take that up and we come back.
Well, if we took it up now, then.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Who did the second on that?
I did.
Okay.
I think we died.
Okay, now I want to drop down to the, uh, public, no, yeah, it's public.
Park board.
Park board. Uh, there's a request from the Pepperfest Committee, they would like to put up, put a concrete slab in front of the village hall. Pay for it, of course. Wally, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah.
I've got a recommendation from the park board. She can open it up for me, man.
Yeah, with the Villa Hall addition, Pepperfest no longer has the area previously used for cooking and Wally Gregerson presented a request by the Pepperfest Committee to the park board for approval to construct a concrete slab approximately six feet. Yeah, with the village hall addition, Pepperfest no longer has the area previously used for cooking. And Wally Gregerson presented a request by the Pepperfest Committee to the park board for approval to construct a concrete slab approximately six feet by three, six feet by thirty-four, by forty-three feet long on the west side of the building between the sidewalk and the village hall building. He commented that it would be much easier for Pepperfest to conduct the activities needed if they had the electrical and other items available for use on the concrete area. And he stated that Pepperfest would pay for it. So the motion is to move to approve the Pepperfest Committee request to build a six-foot by forty-three-foot concrete slab on the west side of the village hall to be paid for by Pepperfest.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it, so we can talk.
Okay.
And then while.
There's a four-foot sidewalk.
Four, thank you.
And then it's a three-foot setback in the building, the pings. And it'll be a four-foot sidewalk and about nine foot of bean space.
Okay, I mean, I'll, I'll be very honest. When I first saw that, I was, I was a little surprised when I read this. And, you know, we just get done designing a building, and now somebody wants to stick a concrete slab in there that was never anticipated. So my first reaction was I wasn't very, I'm very, didn't find it very appealing to put it there, okay? Not opposed to the concept of a, of a cooking area somewhere if you guys want to pour a concrete slab. Not so sure I want it right there, though, was my first reaction. So that's, that's kind of my reaction. I don't know if there's a better place for it.
Well, this way we have access to the water, and our electrical is right there, and the drainage and everything is figured out.
Do you have any artist drawings or architectural drawings that we could take a look at for what this would be?
No, I got it on the board up there, but it's a hard C right now.
That's a nice drawing, Wally.
Yeah.
It would.
Can, can you describe what you've got on the wall? Because very honestly, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Could I make a suggestion if you're talking? What's the size of the slab again, while?
Six by forty.
Four feet.
Four feet by.
Could they, could, would you be amenable to do it in pavers or something like that, that, you know, that might be a little more aesthetically pleasing? Plus, it comes out of the ground a little easier. For some reason, you want to change something, you just pull them out and change it? It's not that terribly much. It's gonna be a little more in the slab, but it might look a little nicer and maybe do a little design work with it, you know?
Sounds good.
All right, I'll throw in my three cents. Money that, you know, you need more nowadays. Two cents doesn't make it. If you were to take a look out there at the, you'll, you'll see the drip line where the water has already fallen off the roof. Similar here, although there is a gutter, you still have a drip line, you still have stuff that's gonna run off the roof. And if, when it comes to landscaping, you know, Becky is, Becky would like very much to get going on that project. But this has also held things up a little bit. But I have no doubt that she would have rock for about the first two feet from the building out to, because you can't, you know, on dirt right there, you don't want to plant plants there because you got all the stuff that's gonna be running off the roof. And so might I propose that if you were gonna go with the concrete slab, that it would be, let's say, four to six, you pick the number from, from the building itself out. That takes care of that drip line of the roof and have it as an L shape. Because if you look at the way the building's already splattered with mud, and that's from the runoff off the roof, then you have that L shape. That way, we can plant bushes, we could plant grass, rather than having two strips of grass, which I think is going to look rather bizarre, to tell you the truth. You have, in your drawing there, you have, if I, I'm gonna kind of guess that.
Why don't, George, why don't you draw what you're describing, if you can?
Okay. Current building.
Yep.
Uh, right now, we have, this is a, this is a drip line. So what I'm suggesting is that you put your concrete slab along here. So then, and I'll continue, the drip line would be along here, even though this has the gutter. This is right here outside of these windows, okay? So we'll just put some windows in here, so that you know what we're, what I'm referring to. And this over here represents the main entrance to the building. Because right now, what you've got, you've also got a sidewalk, the handicap sidewalk here, and you've got the monument wall. The memorial wall is here. So what you were proposing, if I understand correctly, was to put that piece in here. So now what you have is you've got green, green, you have concrete, concrete wall, building. And what I'm suggesting is if you leave, if you put the concrete right up against the building, you keep this a more open green space. Just throwing it out as a, because Danny talked to me about this, and that's why.
Well, she said that they wanted to put pings along the wall of here.
But you can't have pings, well, you could, but then you got the drip line from the, I think you still need, you would still need rock out from, from the building for a few, a couple feet. So you don't want to plant, you don't want to plant plants where you're gonna get the dripping coming right off the roof.
We're trying to combine, you know, you know, being, you know, amenable to the needs of the Pepperfest, which I think, you know, everybody is. By the same token, we're trying to make sure that we end up with something which certainly doesn't detract from the fact that we just spent seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars building a new, new village hall, and we spent a fair amount of time looking at the aesthetic aspects of it. And I don't want to just blow that off and say, "Sure, let's just throw a concrete slab. Mark's idea is good." You know, I don't know whether or not, you know, Pepperfest would be willing to do this or not, but I guess I'd like to see a little bit more thought put into this, rather than, I understand why you want it there, because you have access to electricity and water, and that's.
Gas pipe is there.
Pardon?
There's a gas outlet right there.
Just off the top, I mean, is, does it make sense to put a concrete slab right next to the foundation? Does that pose any problems? I don't, I don't see this being any different than putting a.
The only problem is you're setting your tents up to cover that, protect that area.
Because the slab is to stand on, cook, and.
Right.
And it, you'd, unless it went out further, you'd be dri, being dripped on whenever, if it rained. Or you're saying you'd have to have the, the tents up against the wall.
Be hard to put the tents up against the building.
Well, one of the things that, you know, I don't like to do is sit here and design things on the fly, because it ends up looking like it at the end, like you designed it on the fly.
Isn't there a way that you can have, have a forklift truck deliver a slab for temporary use, and then when you're done with it, you lift it up and move it? It doesn't have to be concrete. It seems to me there's gotta be something like this that's used in circuses and fairs and places like that that use this kind of stuff. I mean, this isn't, we're not reinventing a wheel here. It's only for three days of the year. We gotta, let's keep that in mind, too. One one-hundredth of a year.
Did you consider other options?
No, this is the one we went with, the board went with, so. Throw it up to you.
Well, the, the answer is I'd like to see different, I'd like, I personally would just like to see some additional options. It's not that we're opposed to the concept, we're supporting Pepperfest, you know? And kind of, I realize it's not, has nothing to do with the village, but it's
Well, see, we're a little push of the time.
Part.
Because they wanted to green that up right away, you see.
Well, but you can green it up pretty fast. So, I mean, it's not like we're out of time, and we don't need it till August. And you're gonna cover it up anyway. And kill it.
I mean, let's be honest, you could have green in a day.
Yeah.
But I know that we've had, you know, you know, I think we've had at least some amount of landscaping, planning already taking place, and this is certainly, you know, represents a change from that.
Who's doing that? The landscape plan?
Becky O'Keefe is working on her master garden.
For the.
And she was, she's coming to the park board meeting next week to kind of give us an idea of what her plan is.
Can we get Wally in touch with her to say?
I think she's waiting to find out what's decided there, so she knows how to, what, what she has to work with for landscape.
The, what, what again is the purpose for this concrete pad again?
Put our, put our equipment on.
Okay, and then, and then, do you have tents over the top of it, or tents beyond it?
Protect their cooking.
Okay, okay, tents would be on it.
In, in terms of time, would it be all right if you, if I met with Wally? I'm pretty familiar with Pepperfest deeds and pretty familiar with what kind of things can be done landscaping-wise.
Sure.
Maybe we meet, wanna meet just tomorrow, go over it quick, and then try to get into a public works meeting or whoever, just so we can get it back to the board in some fashion or other?
Sure.
Is that all right with you?
If Mark is a member of the board, you can just go ahead.
One of seven. You know, I'd do anything for you, Wally.
Well, I'm just trying to get.
We'll get it going.
All right.
Talking that big a piece of something, and if we gotta work around it for the rest of landscaping, it can be done.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's not, I don't consider it an irrational request. I think it's just a question of how does it fit in.
I think it could have been made a little better, the request, but that's okay. You got your flag. Go on home.
Well.
You might hurt a guy.
We have, we have a motion and a second on the floor, which is to do what the Pepperfest had, had wanted, so we either have.
I'm gonna, we table it.
Does that take questions?
Table everything. I can't make a decision. Can't or won't.
Do I just withdraw it?
Would the maker of the motion and the second agree to withdraw the motion?
Sure.
Jim?
Sure, I withdraw my second.
We have no motion on the floor. And there's been a volunteer to, to work with Pepperfest to try and resolve this, so we can deal with it at next month's, next month's meeting. Okay?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just touch, we're gonna have a public welfare meeting. If you guys come up with something, I don't know if it's welfare or not.
Are you kidding? I've been to those before.
Hey, we can get stuff done at those. We actually.
You don't have nothing to do.
Don't tell anybody else.
Okay. Moving on to item number seven on the agenda, we've got a roster of A and B licenses, cigarette license and amusement permits. I believe we have a recommended motion for that.
What's, what's he looking at there? Oh, cigarettes.
I need to give you, should I give you a change? There was an additional statement, issue statement that was loose.
Yep.
It wasn't a replacement.
Yep, yep, I'm gonna hear, sorry.
What was the difference here?
Okay, right, item number seven, we're gonna sell some cigarettes here.
If we were to stop issuing cigarette sales, then maybe there wouldn't be any. Just kidding. What's different, Gloria, with the one that was laying on a table and?
The one that was laying on the table didn't outline the parentheses and the, include both beer and liquor. If you'll notice, the class, prens A versus, and prens class A, prens.
Okay, all right. All right. Looks like we'll need one, two, three, four, five. Five motions to deal with these licenses, all of which have been already reviewed and approved, and so they're all being recommended. So Chair would entertain a motion on the first one.
I move that we approve renewal of a class B liquor license for the Village Inn for Lee Helverson. Is that the first one?
No.
No.
Oh, did I miss it?
Oh, wait on, God, I'm way ahead. Jesus.
Speed reader.
Lee, I'll give you a license anyway.
He just wanted, he just wanted to read the long one.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll move that we approve class A license for fermented malt beverages for Village Liquor Store, Kimberly White Agent, with an effective date July first, two thousand eight through June thirtieth, two thousand nine.
And class A.
Get all that, Kathy?
You just have to copy it off the sheet.
All right, is there a second?
Yes.
Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All approved, same sign, or opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, next one?
Somebody else can fill this one. I've had a rough night.
I move to approve the class A fermented malt beverage license for Freedom Value Center, Inc., Paul Kurt Agent, with effective date of July one, two thousand eight through June thirtieth, two thousand nine, as recommended by the village administrator.
Is there a second?
Second, that. All right, I'll read the next one. Oh, you gotta vote.
We'll try to stay within some kind of procedural.
Three, four, five, let's get the.
Correctance here. All right, any other questions on that one? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I move we approve class B fermented malt beverages and class B intoxicating liquor license with effective date of July one, two thousand eight through June thirty, two thousand nine, for LDJT, Inc. Doing business as the Village Inn, Lee Helverson, Agent Malalouin, Inc., doing business as Malalouin, Peggy Multer, Agent Starsbar, Inc., doing business as Starsbar, William Souter, Agent Xanner, Inc., doing business as Idaho Chuck's, D. Paul Roddy, Agent Lambden, Inc., doing business as Mama Maria's Restaurante, Anne Marie Brewer, Agent, Cabin North Hudson, Inc., doing business as North Point Bar and Grill, Shane Benoy, Agent, and Zappa and Zappa, doing business as Muds and Suds, D. Paul Roddy, Agent, is recommended by the village administrator. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Is there a second?
Sure, second.
Questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Number four.
Can we interrupt for a moment?
Sure, what you got?
Mark, did I, did we need to incorporate any of your issue statement for that new license? Just to, to clarify, because it is new that we've never had a beer license for the, the value, the Freedom Value Center. And he had put down.
But his material, his information was in there.
Yeah, and there was no, there was no additional restrictions other than state law or our ordinance. It was just more of an informational sort of.
Okay. All right, uh, next item. No, this, this one's tobacco.
I'll do the coin-operated one.
Oh, you, oh, okay. Sandra, you got that one?
Sandra's gonna do coin up.
All right. I need tobacco, I need to sell tobacco here. Next one.
Go ahead, Colleen.
As the public, as the nurse, I really don't want to do this. Not that I approve of.
You can make that qualification if you want.
Yes, I want you to approve the over-the-counter tobacco sales licenses for the Village Inn, Malalouin, Starsbar, Village Inn, or Village Liquor Store, North Point Bar and Grill, and Freedom Value Center, with an effective date of July first, two thousand eight through June thirtieth, two thousand nine, as recommended by the village administrator.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Last one, Colleen's got that, her, uh.
No, Sandra does.
Sandra.
I move we approve the coin-operated amusement license for Malalouin, Starsbar, the Village Inn, North Point Bar and Grill, and Muds and Suds, with an effective date of July one, two thousand eight through June thirtieth, two thousand nine, as recommended by the village administrator.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Carried. Resolution two oh eight, Department of Natural Resources Review of Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, Google Request. I understand that this really, although it's a formal resolution, it is a very procedural matter.
Yes, we will be asked to do this every year. It's just verifying that this, the board has seen the compliance report and agrees with.
All right. Uh, since I didn't get a chance to make any motions yet, I'd make a motion that we adopt resolution reviewing compliance maintenance report resolved by those of North Hudson and Department of Natural Resources. Following actions were taken by the Village of North Hudson Board of Trustees. Whereas the Village Board of Trustees have reviewed the compliance maintenance annual report, which is attached to this response, which is dated this third day of June. Uh, so I'd make a motion that we adopt resolution two oh eight dash oh six as written.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this? Not resolutions. Resolutions, I think, require a roll call vote, so we'll start on the, on the far right. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Larry, yes. George?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Mark, yes.
Plan Commission recommendations, Chair update, there is no one from the Plan Commission here, so we'll pass on that. Finance Committee? Finance Committee have a couple of actions?
Could you read the motion that we had?
Move to approve the May 2008 non-recurring claims totaling $38,275.26.
Yeah, more or less, but I think there was some, there was a little bit more involved in that, but I think it was basically, we added $8,000, the original. But that's why I was wondering if we could read it back.
You approved the May 2008 non-recurring claim totaling, what, plus $8,000 for 80% of the retained monies to dereconstructing for a total of $38,275.26.
Which is eight percent?
Which is 80%.
Or 80, yeah, which is 80% of the $10,000.
Okay.
And I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any questions regarding the claims? Okay, uh, that does recall, require a roll call, so we'll start again on this end. Joe?
Um, yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Larry, yes. George?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm going to bring up one item from the President's comments regarding the library. The four municipalities have been attempting to take a much stronger and more involved perspective regarding that. And in particular, we're trying to wrestle, we're trying to, need to resolve and will resolve over the next several months, and bring back to their respective municipalities specific recommendations in terms of how should the library be structured legally. As some of you may have read in the paper, there's like five options that be, that could be considered. There are pros and cons to each of those. At the last meeting of the four municipalities, it was agreed that what we need to do is retain legal counsel to do that. An individual who runs a law firm here in town, Jeff Redman, happens to have an extensive amount of experience dealing with nonprofits, as well as with municipalities, as well as corporate law. And he certainly appeared to be imminently qualified to assist us in that process, as well as to act as the facilitator in terms of saying, what is it you're trying to accomplish? And then I'll translate that into legalese for you. He had given us a quote of saying, if I were normally doing this, it'd be about $20,000. He's agreed to do it for 10. The four of us have agreed that, since we all benefit equally from this, we would each put up $2,500. And he's doing this legal action for a fixed fee. So I would make the motion that the village contribute $2,500 in support of pursuing the various legal requirements associated with advancing the library project, which residents approved at the April referendum. Questions?
I think rather than the term advancing the library profit proposal, it should be, do some fact finding, just so that everybody's aware that we're not making the mo-
It's definitely fact finding.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. All right, um, okay. Any other comments? If not, we'll do, do another roll call, start on same end. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry, yes?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sandra and Mark?
Yeah.
The whole purpose of getting that is so that we can provide residents ultimately with the information that says, what would it cost? And what would the structure look like? All right, Plan Commission, we're done with. Finance Committee, I think, was that it? No, no, we've got one more. Um, that's actually under Public Safety, so we'll come, deal with that there. During the plans review, okay, that's it from Finance, so we'll move on to Public Works.
We did not meet, so I have no report.
Okay, that's good, that's brief, Joe, thank you. Public Safety?
I could go on and on.
Please refrain, you know.
As I was not here for the Public Safety Committee meeting during the month of May, I would ask either Colleen or Mark to comment. And perhaps they might want to make the motion, or there are two motions.
Yeah.
We had a meeting?
You were there.
Yeah, it was a quick one, remember, Mark?
Yeah, one of you was the chair.
Colleen was, she made the motion.
Um, I move to allow Sergeant Bull to be paid the overtime wages for all hours worked on the card grant, without deducting those amounts from the limits placed on his overtime payout per his MOU with the Village of North Hudson.
I'll second that. Mark, do you want to make any comments on that?
I'll field questions, I guess.
Okay.
Dr. Ari?
I don't have any, we dealt with it in finance. Pretty clear, I mean, Mark has a limitation, Sergeant Bull has a limit on his overtime. This allows him to work overtime beyond that that is paid for by somebody else, and so we're excusing him for that portion, and it doesn't count against him.
And it's 100% reimbursed by the grant?
Yeah, it doesn't cost the village anything to do this, and it doesn't penalize Mark.
Right.
All right, uh, let's see, is this a spending? I don't even know, this isn't even, this isn't even a spending. So all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All oppose, same sign? Motion carried?
And then, I'll, I'll, move to approve the purchase of one PBT unit at a cost not to exceed $900.
We do this periodically during the year?
Annual.
Annual.
Does the card grant money cover the whole cost?
Yes.
Okay, that's-
Isn't it card grant like a poker tournament?
Like a what?
Okay, since it's not really, since it's not really a spending decision, we're just agreeing to let the card grant pay for something. Um, we'll just do a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All oppose, same sign? Motion carried? Public Welfare?
Uh, Public Welfare did not meet, but two things, we are changing the date of our next month's meeting to the 23rd, if anybody wants to participate.
What was that date again?
23rd, 26th.
I'm expecting you there. The, there's been a little bit of talk, went to meeting with, um, DNR, TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Load. They're going to set parameters for Lake Malaloo, and it's going to have an impact on agricultural use on all of the, the watershed district north of the loo. It'll get involved over the next few years, it sounds like it's very well organized. And that's all I have to report, I'll be the point person on this thing as it goes on for, for as long as it goes on, I guess, so.
You know, that'll change my dad's garden or not?
That's what they're focused on, Mark, yeah. That's basically where they're considering 80% of the problems are from.
Tony's garden?
I'm sure it won't, how does that sound?
There's going to be public outcry about that.
Other than that, I will have an update at the next board meeting.
Thank you for following up on that. Uh, let's see, Pepperfest, okay, the park board.
Yep, I have more.
All yours.
Um, there's, so a couple of tables in Pepperfest Park that are needing replacement. So I move to approve the replacement of two tables at Pepperfest Park, using two-by-two and three-eighths galvanized frames, two-by-ten treated board stained in miscellaneous hardware, not to exceed $550.
Second?
I have.
Got that, all right.
But for both of them?
Total, for the two.
Okay. Sorry? I don't see a lot of discussion, so we'll start the roll call vote again.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Larry, yes?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
All right.
And our other item was, we, as the, the park board went down to Jensen Park and Browns Beach as part of our meeting last month, Jensen Park, we're looking at some playground equipment. We don't have prices on that, so I have no motion regarding that one. But regarding Browns Beach, Chuck Roberts, the next-door neighbor to the park, met with us during our visit, and he brought up concerns regarding ATVs being driven on the beach, and up the stairs, bicycles being ridden on the stairs, the need for park boundaries being clearly marked, the need for signs with rules clearly stated, swimmers swimming beyond the designated, he said swimmers are swimming beyond the designated swimming area. And his, you know, some of his requests seemed reasonable, just to put up signs and try to designate the park boundaries to keep people from trespassing on the adjacent properties, and also to have the rules of no ATVs allowed, which already is the village ordinance, but apparently sometimes during the winter, people from outside the village are coming up that way. No fires, service pets only, and no trespassing on private property.
Okay, how much?
Well, we have to get quotes from Mark.
Oh, oh, you proceed.
We don't have, but we at least want approval that we can, you know. You agree that we should, uh, try to improve the signage and that for, keep the residents happy?
But you don't have a dollar amount?
No.
What's there to move?
There's nothing to move.
I suppose. We just, yeah, update, yeah, we just wanted to give you an update.
All right, that's a good update.
What we want done on the park. So that's it.
Okay. New business, I've already covered that under, uh, library project. Do you have anything? All right, Chair would make a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to section 19.851, pre reconsidered trial of application for operator's license.
I'll second.
All right, uh, the board is now in closed session, we will take a two-minute break to clear the room.
We'll be done here in a second.